Okay. All set. Okay, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Town of Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. This is a web-based meeting, so we are operating under the following procedures. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. The video recording will be available within 24 hours. And will be posted on the Town of Waterford's Planning Department website. To ensure good sound quality. Default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they are speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or video disruption. The Zoom moderator may place them on mute. Or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The chair will announce when the hearing is open. And will ask for public comment. While the comment will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about the process? You may call our staff at eight six oh four 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 five eight one three. Between the hours of eight and four P M. Wednesday through Friday. And with that, I turn it over to the chair.
Hey, welcome everyone to the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Starting the meeting here at six thirty and it looks like. There'll be John and Tim and Joe. Me and we'll see Karen. For Joe DeBono who is absent tonight. Okay, Karen?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, if you can just take a role, Mark.
Okay, taking a role. Okay, Greg Massett.
Here.
John Bashaw.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale.
Here.
Joe DeBono. And Karen Barnett.
Here.
And Joe Bunkley.
Here.
Thank you.
You got this one last meeting, would be.
Yeah. You look pretty tired, Joe. You look nice and relaxed. Alright, so we have number one. Well, that was the appointment of Karen. Item number two, we have an approval of the April thirteenth meeting minutes.
Or this is John Bashaw. I'll move approval the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by John, seconded by Joe. All in favor? I.
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 Any opposeds? Okay. Number three, item number three receipt of applications. Do we have any applications?
We have no new applications.
Okay. Moving right along, we have item number four, public hearing. For the, at the request of Shoreline Scooter Rentals. Number P L dash twenty one dash four. Request Shoreline Scooter Rentals LLC applicant. Handels Investors LLC owner for a special permit approval. For a scooter rental facility at thirty five Great Neck Road. I G Zone in accordance with sections eleven point two point twelve. And twenty-three of the zoning regulations. We have, I guess, Mr. Hurt and Mr. Reynolds here.
Okay, what I would like to do first is read the exhibits into the, into the records.
Okay.
Okay, so exhibit number one is the application. Exhibit two, Shoreline Scooter Rentals LLC Business Proposal. Exhibit three, special permit findings. Dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty one, received April sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Exhibit four, Shoreline Scooter Rental LLC floor plan. Exhibit five, site plan, new scooter rental facility. Dated April first, twenty twenty one, revised April twenty first, twenty twenty one. Exhibit six, notice of the public hearing advertised in the day newspaper. On April sixteenth, twenty twenty one, and April twenty first, twenty twenty one. Exhibit seven, so hearing notification letter to the applicant. Dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty one, along with certificates of mailing. Exhibit eight, traffic officer comments dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Exhibit nine, a staff report dated April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. And that's it.
Okay. Mister, Mister Hurt and Mister Reynolds, are you submitting a presentation together separately? How are you going to do that?
It will be together. With the help of, of. Mister Mark there, we're going to be sharing the screen.
Yeah.
As, as an exhibit and we'll be going through it in detail. Going through in that motion.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll make you co-host, Nate.
Okay.
Okay, you should have, be able to share your screen now.
Um. Here, screen, okay. Okay, I don't, I don't see. Okay. What, what is this right here? This, this isn't my presentation.
That looks like something from Zoom itself. Did you want me to start the screen sharing in ICAN? Because I have a copy of your presentation here.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we can do it that way.
Okay. Yeah, I need you to turn off screen share.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Dear business plan, is that right? Choice.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, good, good evening, gentlemen. My name is Nathan Hurt, along with my colleague and cousin, Charles Reynolds. We are petitioning for the permitting and usage. Of thirty-five Great Neck Road in Waterford, Connecticut, oh, six three eight five, building unit two. We're going to talk about a few things with Shoreline Scooter Rentals and go through the presentation. And at the end, if any, any questions, please ask. If you don't know, Mark, that's our logo, by the way. It's related to Shoreline Scooter Rentals and bringing in a fun, family-friendly atmosphere. Who is Shoreline Scooter Rentals LLC? Well, when we first. Looked at the community of Waterford in New London County. We came up with a few things. Why are we here? What are we here for? Who do we want to? Have involved? And where do we want this at? And those areas led us to you guys today. What we wanted to create was a fun, family-friendly recreational activity. Through something that this area with the shoreline community doesn't really have in most communities such as. We've ventured and done research to, related to. Recreational activities such as. So that led us to creating this business model. On next slide. Now, the nature of the business was to establish a brand that serves the needs of the area. The needs of the area, as our research would show. Is that you have Hartness Park. You have Great Neck. Road in, you have the surrounding beaches and the areas within the beaches. All the businesses in local areas. I don't know if, you know, you guys go on vacation, I imagine you do. But when, when you're riding or taking a bike or, or doing some type of recreational activity, you get to see the area in a different light. And that's what we decided to do. Was present the area in a different light. To show the beauty in all the, the activities that are available within the area. That promise to, looking at a new way of enjoyment for the shoreline community. And one of the things we wanted to do was build new relationships with businesses and communities. And one of the things, two of the things that we came up with, was just not riding the scooters. But presenting tours. And associating ourselves with different communities, different businesses. And one of the tours that I came up with is called. Scavenger hunt, scooter scavenger hunt. Where we work with local businesses. And we send our client, well, our riders to. Go to these businesses, whether it's dining, whether it's shopping, whether it's going to the beach. And we'll create some type of surprise or adventure. Where they come back and bring it to us and they get a discount. Or they get something for going to that business. And we work hand in hand with the community, creating a fun, family-friendly atmosphere. So that led to, again, as, as I keep harping on, a fun, family-friendly and safe experience. And the number one thing that stands out to us is how we can create a safe. Minimize any hazards within. The shoreline. And one of the things that we also came up with is the fact that we would want to create destinational routes. Destination, destination routes will lead to specific locations of area. Of interest that will also minimize any type of hazards. And create that fun, family-friendly atmosphere that we're, that we're looking for. That will in turn have lasting memories. And this is how we, we view is building the brand. Is bringing the community together. Having great customer service. Creating a need that's never been done and showing, not just riding our scooters. But what you get out of that enjoyment, what experiences that comes with that. And so that, that's basically the nature of the business related to. Our model. Next slide, please. Now, how we operate. The leadership is me, my cousin, Charles Reynolds. And my colleague who's not here, which is Felix Cosby. What we wanted to do is establish. Safety. Not just safety, but we wanted to work with law enforcement. First responder. The public in any, any way necessary. Get feedback through a website on better, better ways to implement great safety practices. Setting a standard of excellence. Within the community of, of, of not just. How we run the business, but how we are in the community and how we work with others in the business. We want to eventually start a youth initiative program. That in the summer, we're hiring. Sixteen and older high school students. That will get the experience of what, what is, what it's like to have a workday during the summer. You know, put a little money in their pocket, you know, for anything they may want to do. And just build, also helping building the community and building a work ethic. The educational tutorial for the usage of the scooters goes as this. We will, I have reached out to Connecticut DMV. To go over motorcycle tutorials. I've reached out to officer. The traffic officer in reference to what is the best practices for safety. And also, we will be doing tutorials and demonstrations of how to use the scooters. When they go out, we will also give educational components. On how to travel, how to ride on a scooter, how to stop, how to brake. How to use this scooter, not just. You use it like it's a car. So. All these specifics interact, interacting with the public and the safety and traffic lights and intersections. This will be a mandatory component of our business model. This is number one. And that goes without saying, that complies with the safety compliance that we're willing to have with local authority. And going above and beyond what's necessary by the state of Connecticut when it comes to traffic laws. Our customer service will be hands-on and will work with every aspect of. Every aspect of. Any type of industry that is willing to work with us and we're willing to work with them. To make sure, we ensure that we're giving the top. Flight customer service, hands-on and that customers are satisfied with our product. And that brings us back to the business-to-business connections by having great customer service. Great work ethic, work ethic and proven that we can be helpful and a need in the community. We're, we're looking to build great relationships within the community with business-to-business as well. That leads us to the next slide. Some of the procedures that we'll, we'll take on will be equipment checks. That goes before and after every ride. That goes to checking the oil, checking the brakes, the wheel hubs. Cleaning the, cleaning the vehicles, helmets, glasses. All these will be necessary for the riders to use. One of the procedures that is necessary, you must be eighteen years and older to ride the vehicle with a valid driver's license. These, these are necessary standards. All helmets must be worn at all times with safety glasses. And the tutorial must be signed. Understanding the educational and safety component before every ride on our scooter. Shoreline Scooter Rentals usage requirements are as follows with what I just spoke about. Previously. The benefits of the safety tutorial to our customers will again minimize. Hazards. When you're educated, you're more aware of your surroundings. You would take the necessary steps because we're not just, we're not just telling you, we're showing you. Not just showing, we're having you read, we're having you sign document. To understand the importance of our safety tutorials. They educate, also in educating our employees on customer service best practices. These practices, what, what I'm referring to as teaching our customers. Reading any updates related to Connecticut state law. We're also going to be. Trying to, well, not trying, but we are going to be emailing our traffic officer. In any updates, if anytime he can come over or will email. Related to what we can do to, again, minimize any type of hazard. We'll have daily meetings on the most effective ways to ensure customer satisfaction. And we'll also be sending out. Each time we have a new customer, we'll have their email. And we'll be sending out responses to see how enjoyable it was. What can we do to increase our presence and? Anything we can do to also make sure that safety is a number one requirement as well. That moves us to our next slide. The site plan, and this is where Charles. Is, Charles, are you there? Okay, well, I'll continue. The site plan is at thirty-five Great Neck Road. Building two. The size usage, we are required by. Your zoning commission that we must have five wheel stops. Those, those wheel stops will be in front of, of the unit, as you can see. We will also have sanctions. Sanctions will go around. The right-hand side and lower, all the way around to our area of usage. To minimize vehicle and pedestrian flow of traffic. We will have a backside for customers. Over to the right will be the usage area of, of our demonstration. And the front will serve as a service window. Only, there will be no entering of the site. The improvements will be wheel stripe, wheel stripes. And cones associated with traffic that. The, Mr. Hill will have a, a building manager mark that out as well for cones for traffic related to. Accessibility to buildings within that zone. So bringing us to the pedestrian, the vehicle traffic with, with the parking. With, with our scooters and with the pedestrians being able to follow what's in the site plan. It will give a clean runway, a clean exit, a clean enter. And to our facility, making it easily, easily accessible. And safety area for which our customers can enjoy and service our products and use our products. That brings us to the next slide. The goals of this project is to establish ourselves as. A sustainable business. What we want to establish is that. Shoreline Scooter Rentals will serve the public. Will reach out to business-to-business and will make it to a point where we're sustainable for years to come. Again, with building relationships. Our timetable is, we have a set date of launching is May thirty first, Memorial Day. And it will end around Labor Day. Or possibly around the first week of October. The timetable will be a summer recreational activity. And from that point on, we will do marketing in the winter to prepare for the upcoming summer. It will be a summer activity. That brings us to the next slide. Our marketing plan, we have a website called ShorelineScooterRentals dot com. It's a progressive website that will, will be only using credit card loot. Credit card use will also monitor. How our customers, they can book appointments. That's something that, that when I, when I looked into this business, a lot of customers. That deal with this industry are coming up walk, walking or they're, they're not able to. Use effective ways of booking their transportation. But with this, with the website, this will give them a chance to book previously, set up appointments. And also get updates on any information related to our scooter rentals. I reached out to ctvisit.gov. Upon approval, if approval, we'll be working with them to also use. Because they get so many visits, they get, from what I'm being told, six thousand hits a day on new ventures within the area, so we'll be using them. I've also will be working with the SBDC, Small Business. Development Center of Connecticut. To also help with understanding the needs and the best, best practices for marketing our campaign. Will be working with local radio, newspaper ads, guerrilla marketing. By pushing our scooters out, meeting people of fun, family-friendly smiles. And also flyers, and that will be the marketing campaign, campaign that we use to execute our plan. That brings us to the next slide. And our competitive analysis. So when I did the competitive analysis. There's nothing like this in this area. This business model, the closest thing next to us is in Newport, Rhode Island, and that's scooter world. Since that's the closest thing, we kind of monopolize our, our ability to be the first and the only. In this geographical location that has a usage for our scooters. Because of our beautiful shorelines, because of all the parks, because of all the businesses, because of all the events. We can turn this into something that when somebody goes to the beach or, or. Does dining or fun, family-friendly activity. You can take the scooter for an hour, two hours, whatever. And get a chance to really get to know the area and see the area from a different perspective. Our strengths are our high port, high-performance equipment. We have two thousand twenty-one forty-nine C C scooters. They come with GPS. Location finders and monitoring equipment. Not just with this, this equipment, it also gives you ability to use our mapping. Our mapping concepts where we'll have designated mapping routes with inside the units as well. The weaknesses is the unknown, since we're a new business. This new business in the area, something that has never experienced this. It will be a learning curve that we're willing to accept and learn from, to make our, to maximize our weaknesses to increase our strengths. And that brings us to the next slide. So from geographic and from the geographic civilization of before the pandemic. And I looked this up at ct dot, dot visit dot gov. Because they had limited information related to the area of Waterford and the influx of tourism. They did give a broad view. The broad view for prior to the pandemic. Was about seventy, between seventy to seventy-five thousand for the summer. For the, the year of two thousand sixteen, very similar. Two thousand seventeen was a slight drop-off. And two thousand eighteen was more of a drop-off. To the updates at this point, that's about all we have. But also talking with the officers and the public and the officers in London. Officers and. And Waterford and county officials. There seems to be an influx. What's going to be happening this summer with the possible restraints from our government? Related to the pandemic and the usage of the beast, the beaches should be increased dramatically this summer. Which I'm pretty sure everyone is aware here. This brings us to the ending. And this is the Q and A part and any questions related to or any answers I can have at this time.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Hurt. Well-done presentation. Any commission members have any questions for either Mr. Hurt or Mr. Reynolds?
This is Karen, I do.
Can we, wait a minute, can we, do we need the screen share or can we go back to?
Yeah.
The gallery.
Yeah, let's go back.
Okay, Karen.
My main question was, in reading through the business proposal and the resources section. It mentions a mobile enterprise with this secondary idea being the bricks and mortar shop. Can you expand on that a little?
Yes, Karen. Well, the mobile enterprise at first, when we first started talking to Mark. We wanted to do it as a trailer. But because of zoning regulation. We found out that we would have to go a different route and we would have to have a brick and mortar location. So that's when the energy changed and then we started looking. And we realized that we would have to get a special permit. Through working with Mark, he explained to the procedures that we would need to take in order to get that. And so. After working with the building inspector and the fire marshal. One of the things we realized is that we wanted to do like an ice cream shop. To minimize on cost and to make it the most effective way possible to help our customers. So one of the things at this brick and mortar location, there'd be no servicing at, at this location. There would be, there would be no holding of gas cans. There'd be no working of equipment. Anything related to our equipment will go to our service areas. Anything related to filling our, our, our scooters because they are gassed. They will go right up to the Henny Penny, right up the street. That's what made it a perfect location. So it's really just a storage area. And it's also an area that is, that is relegated for the permitting and the usage within that, within that zoning permit.
Okay, and then I just had one or two more, more questions. I noticed that your location there on Great Neck Road. How do you expect most of your users to arrive? Are you expecting people to use Uber? Are you expecting them to get dropped off or drive up in a car?
Well, we'll, we'll be doing, well, our. Our. Excuse me. With the website, we're, we're website-based, so. Our marketing plan is key. Because of course, word of mouth and with the marketing plan, what we want to do is try to generate people to come. But the website is probably our key base because it, it allows us to monitor. Our scooters because we're, we're going electric, paperless. And with that, booking appointments allows us to set up a more, a more effective. And with that, it, booking appointments allows us to set up a more, a more effective way to work our clients. So that everybody is, so we have, so we're organized. So we have organization when it comes to, but we will, we will take walk-ins. If they come and when they come, but it's more web, web based. Business for renting of our, our equipment.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess what I'm thinking is that my, my only real experience with a, with a company similar to yours would be. You know, we went on a trip to Martha's Vineyard and when we came off the ferry boat, there was a scooter rental place right there across the street. So we could walk from the ferry boat right to scooter rental business. In Waterford, you're not necessarily right on the path of, you know, a ferry dock or bus terminal. I'm just curious how you expect.
Give me one moment, one moment, one moment. My computer.
Sorry, I, I got you, Karen. Hi, I'm Charles. Yes, in, in normal.
You need to introduce yourself and your address for the record, please.
36 Ridgewood, Waterford, Connecticut. I'm Charles Reynolds.
Thank you.
I'm one of the owners. So if I am hearing it correctly, just like when you went to Martha's Vineyard or Block Island. You normally get off the ferry boat and then you go rent scooters because you're by foot traffic, correct? Have I heard that right?
Correct, yes, correct.
Yes, and this certain situation with just new business, we wouldn't be able to generate that kind of foot traffic based on the location. I mean, more than because we're, you know, touching on what Nathan said about, you know, our website. It would look a lot different from those particular businesses because of the lack of foot traffic. That's why we went electronic based with our website. And that's why our marketing plan is so, so serious. In order to generate that kind of traffic. Now, in those situations, the beach, I mean, I haven't really been to Martha's Vineyard, but I know Block Island, the beach is right there. This way, I mean, just to help try to eliminate on some of the car traffic, it's just, our beaches are right there because it's just a little bit down the road. So, I mean, we're, we're pretty much, it's, it's just going to be different.
Okay, and then just one other question. You know, a lot of the beaches in this area have permit restrictions and that sort of thing. How are your scooters? And this might be a better question for Mark. How do the scooters incorporate into, if you go show up at Harkness with a scooter? Do they treat you as in-state, out-of-state, in-town, out-of-town? Mark, do you know?
I don't know how they treat scooters separately from cars when you go in. But certainly if they're, you know, in order to determine in-state, out-state, you probably have to have some ID on you anyway. In order, you know, you'd have a driver's license anyway to be on the scooter. So I would imagine that they would ask, they would ask for identification at the gate. To determine whether in-state or out-state.
Any other, Karen, are you, are you all set or?
I actually have one last question.
Okay.
And I'm just jumping around a little bit here, but I, I noticed it said that you have to be 18 to rent, but they want this to be like a family activity. Will all passengers on the scooters need to be 18 or are there other age restrictions involved?
Yes. We would like all passengers to be at least 18 or older. Just for insurance and liability purposes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other commission members have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Greg.
Joe?
Yeah. My question is, you said the size of the scooters was, sizes of scooters is going to be 49ccs. I believe that does not require motorcycle endorsement with a driver's license. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Would that side scooter, do those scooters have to be registered?
No, they do not.
Okay.
49ccs, because it only goes 25 to 30 miles per hour, it doesn't have to be registered. Once it's over 50, it has to go be registered.
Okay, that's what I thought. So with that said, the mile per hour, we're looking at Great Neck Road is 45 miles per hour in that particular area. That you're looking to establish your business. And then it reduces down to 35 mile an hour just prior to Bramon Road and Lafferty Road heading south. So are these able to travel in the regular travel lane or are they going to have to travel off the side?
They, now, I believe they are able to travel in the regular travel lane. They would just. After talking to Officer Nickerson, which I believe is head of the traffic, you know, for the town of Waterford. He said they would be closer to the fog lanes, but after it reaches the regular miles per hour, it should be able to flow with the regular flow of traffic and operate it like a car after that. But that's the stuff that we will be working with him on hand in hand when we're making our routes.
Okay. My, my only concern is that, you know, on the higher speed travel portion of the road. If they're trying to drive in the travel lane, you're really going to back up traffic, especially in the summer months. Because Great Neck Road can become pretty busy with the beach traffic and Harkness and things of that nature.
Understandable.
But Joe, isn't that kind of like, like a bicycle in, in that sense? I mean, bicycles also go, you know, on, on that portion of the road far slower than the travel, the car traffic. And seems to me it's kind of a similar concept.
Yeah, but I believe a bicycle is not supposed to travel in the center of the travel lane. And that's my concern. They're supposed to try, they can travel in the travel lane, but it has to be due off to the right side.
We can instruct our, our customers to travel towards the right side of the lane until it goes to 35 miles per hour. And that was some of the stuff we were talking with Officer Nickerson about to work hand in hand because it's such a short stint. Where it goes from 45 to 35 going towards the beach.
Okay. As long as you're on board with the police and they're, they're, they're with you. Yeah, I'm good.
Well, yeah, I think, I, I think that one of the contingencies we have as part of this is to that he has to be compliant or, or some sort of program communication with the police department, right? So hopefully that they do that. Tim, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I think there, I guess these are sort of now follow-up questions to some of the other issues that we've discussed already. But with, I think Karen was, was asking a little bit about the, the parking spaces on site that are shown on the site plan. And I guess, I, I'm a little bit concerned about whether there's sufficient parking there. And I was hoping you could talk to us a little bit about that. It sounds like you were saying before, you're planning to try to manage your appointments so that you can kind of control the number of people coming to and from the property. But I imagine with something like this, just where it is in Waterford and the fact that, you know, it's, as has been said, that, you know, there's no train or ferry terminal here where people are going to be walking directly there. You know, it seems like folks are probably going to be parking their cars there and leaving them there for the day while they go ride around on the scooter. How many, how many scooters do you guys have and how do you plan to manage that, that kind of traffic congestion?
Well, right now, because we, we are only starting with 10 scooters and we're a new business to the area. We don't know how it's projected to do. You know, I mean, with, with the lack of foot traffic. The best way we could do it to keep it organized and structured is by the website and our phone. Which is, seems to be different than the other scooter rental places that are around the area like in Block Island and Newport. So that's how we're going to try our best to control the amount of traffic that's down there. We don't have an all-day rental plan as of right now. So everything is for an hour or hour and a half, I mean, hour or two hours as of right now, according to the website. That way we can manage the flow of traffic that's coming in and out of the, the building and out of the, the industrial park. So that, that's why our website is so important because it's electronically based. And when they call or they pull up and let's say they were a walk-in. They pull up in their car, they say, hey, we want to rent a scooter for the day or rent it for the hour. We would have to check to see what times were available. And then that's how we would, we would keep it organized and structured. Based on availability.
So about 10 scooters to start out, you think, and then eventually grow as, as demand, you know, shows that it's appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. And then there, there was one thing that I just, I wanted to make sure was clear for our record. When, when I was looking at the proposed findings that you guys submitted for the special permit findings. At the bottom of that first page, it says in all caps and red that the only activity that you guys are going to be doing on site at 35 Great Neck Road is the storage of the scooters. But I just want to make sure that it's clear for the record that, that what you're asking for is also to have. It looks like on the site plan, a little training and demonstration area at the back of the building. Which I, I think your partner spoke about a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate, just based on the paperwork and everything.
Yes, there's a training, just like with, we try to emulate some of the, you know, the scooter rental places that we traveled through. You know, with everyone, you want to go over the safety. So as you're coming in, there's a, there's an in and then there's an exit portion. And to the right of that, we wanted to make just going over, you know, some of the training of the scooters to go over the, the turn signals, the brake checks. All of the ways to operate it safely before they fully exit out onto their, their journey for the hour.
Okay. And the last question I have is just something about, something I've noticed as I, as these scooters have become more popular around the area. I have been noticing more and more of them over the last few years. And so I guess this is sort of both a question for yourself, but also for Mark, but I want to pose it to you first. I've noticed more and more often I see scooters like this going down the sidewalks. I've seen it in Waterford as well as New London, a little bit in East Line. It was always my understanding that that's, that's not a legal operation of, of these scooters under the traffic laws. Could you talk about that?
I believe, so according to what I've seen, it is not a legal operation of going down to the sidewalk. They can ride towards the fog lane, which would be right where the bike lanes go where people ride their bikes. But to be on the sidewalk, that is not legal. And that's some of the stuff we would go over in our demonstration at Harpaw.
Okay, that's something I wanted to make sure of that, that it would be part of your training. Because I know as you go down towards Harkness there from, from where you're going to be located or where you're proposing to locate. You know, there are sidewalks along there and I could see people, you know, getting nervous about the traffic and detouring up onto the sidewalk and creating you know, some safety concerns there. So then I guess the, the flip side of that question for Mark is in the staff report that you prepared, there was a that I think it was a proposed, I've lost it here. The proposed condition that the applicant coordinate with a traffic officer. And so I'm wondering if there are issues like this coming up where we're seeing, suddenly seeing lots and lots of scooters on the sidewalks like that going down to Harkness or somewhere else in town. Does this condition give you any kind of zoning enforcement options through that condition to address something like that?
Not necessarily zoning enforcement. I mean, I mean, the, you know, the enforcement of, of, of that type of traffic control falls under the, falls under the purview of the police department. However, to get that plan in place and to get, to get Officer Nickerson, who's our town traffic officer. To work with these guys and to make sure that there's a, you know, that he's satisfied with all their safety measures and protocols and everything else. They, until that happens, they're not going to be able to get a certificate of zoning compliance to actually start the business. So I felt that that's a pretty strong, a, a pretty strong key here to make sure, link to make sure that, to make sure that PD is satisfied. And then, you know, if there are those that, you know, you know, violate the law and things like that, then, you know, that's something that PD will enforce.
All right, that makes sense. It's a sort of an interesting, interesting business, you know, we're promoting it for this one location. But, you know, hopefully you guys would be successful and everything and that'll mean that, you know, the activity you're generating is actually kind of going off property. So, but that, that's a good answer. Thank you.
You all set, Tim?
Yeah.
Any, any other questions for the applicants?
Yeah, just, just a few, Greg, if I could.
Yeah, sure.
So you, you talked about the months that you'd be open. What, what do you anticipate being your hours of operation?
Well, right now, they fluctuate, but anywhere from around 10 to 6. You know, because we want to stay where it is light out during the day. That gives us an hour to open, an hour to close, you know, and that's really just gauging it right now based on it being a new business. And, you know, that, that's pretty much where we're at right now.
You'll schedule your appointments so that the last, so the last return will be back at your facility within, you know, like an hour of closing or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, because it gets to my next question, which is, what happens if somebody delivers a scooter late? And they come to your facility and the, the facility is closed, now they've got a scooter. Is there going to be a phone number for them to call on the door?
We already have a business number and if somebody didn't, we're not going to leave with, with a scooter out. Plus we have GPSs on all the scooters so we can always track and we'll have their phone number as well. So we can always call them to let them know that they're running past time and to find out where they are.
Oh, guys, I'm back. Sorry, my computer just went out. But to, and, and thanks, thanks, Charles, for covering me. To, to, to John, Mr. Bashaw, to get back to that. What we, what, what we did is create a waiver within every, every transaction. You receive an email about late fees, anytime overages. Tentative, tentatively, right now, it's, it's $35 to $40 an hour. Each additional hour is $25. The reason why we're using debit cards and credit cards only, so we can build that card. Because there will also be on that email, because when you come in and you, when you, when you rent or preserve the scooter. That will be part of the waiver that you will sign, well, not waiver, but part of the agreement that you will sign stating that you agree to these terms. Part of those terms will be, we'll give you a $15, a 15-minute cushion because we do understand that there may be lates, right? We'll give you a 15 to 20 minute cushion because it's going to take us additional 15 minutes to clean and get the scooters ready. So all this time goes in, so we're looking at about a half an hour in between each ride. So when Charles talks about 10 to 6, really it's between 9 to 7, right? Because you want to prepare an hour before you start and an hour after. And so by having these areas and windows of opportunity, it then gives the, the consumer the option to ride for, if they're, if they're, say they're out and they, they know they're over the time. They already know that from the email and in, in that, in that certificate of emails purchased. That it does state that what their times and what their specifics are to, to the overages. So, yeah, we, there would be a charge for a late fee, but if they go over that, their permitted time. It's only 20, it's a $25 charge for each additional hour. So we're cutting you a break on the ride.
Yeah, and, and I wanted to also make sure that you didn't have the hours extended such that we have 18-year-olds driving scooters at 9, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, you know, visiting, not visiting other places where they might.
Right, right, right. We're, we're well aware of that. We're also, it, it's tentative when we're thinking about adding some, or like our GPSs will be able to take care of that for the most part. We also are, because of the connectivity, we're looking at kill switches possibly to turn them off if that, that would become a habit. But we don't anticipate that, but you, you can, you, you never know, right? You're dealing with 18-year-olds. So that is considerably something to think about.
My last question is, this is also the area where the Tractor Trailer School is located, correct?
Yes.
And have you spoken with them about what it is that you're telling you to do so that you, that they're aware and that you're coordinating with them? Because I'm assuming that the entrance to both to your facility and to their operation are one and the same.
Yes, I talked to John Hendall about that and he has a property manager to pretty much help take care of the safety of going in and out of all that. That's why he chose that building, you know, helped us pick that building and will it be cones that kind of slant off? That's why he chose that building, you know, helped us pick that building and the, will it be cones that kind of slant off? You know, I mean, so to help with the safety of going in and out. Of coming into the industrial park and leaving and exiting, you know. The property.
That will be left, that will be left up to the, the project manager. Uh, he has stated that. He'll, he'll be handling the, the, the traffic related to how that usage of the area works. With our, our product and everybody else's product within that, within that zoning, zoning area.
That's it, Greg. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Um, Mr. Reynolds did a nice job in your absence, so he was, he covered for you.
I was, I was going crazy, trust.
I, I just have a couple of questions for you. Um, you mentioned the GPS. I initially assumed that the rider was gonna have a GPS to know where they are. And now it seems like you're gonna have a GPS to know, for you to know where they are. Does it go both ways?
It does go both ways.
So they're gonna know they're on us, on Coleman Street and you're gonna know they're on Coleman Street?
That's correct.
Okay, um, are they gonna have helmets?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not required by the state of Connecticut, but we require, we require that and safety goggles on, on every rider.
Okay, um. The servicing, there, there's a motion or pro- proposed motion for us to approve this. Uh, with no servicing of the scooters on the premises. Um, what does servicing of these or repairs of these entail? Because it, it, it seems to potentially be allowed in the zone under the regulations, but our motion is to not have that. So, um, are you going to need that?
We're not going to need to do servicing at the establishment. We, we have a deal already in place with the, the people that we bought them from. Anything that goes wrong with the scooters, they'll service them there at that, their facility.
Okay, and, uh, one other thing about the hours, Mark, uh, or do, do you have any? And this is to the applicant. Do you have any objection to a hour timeframe in the approval?
No, no, we don't. We don't have any objection to our timeframe. Uh, but our, our key is daylight hours. We, we want daylight hours. Uh, because again, a miss, uh, again, we're thinking about safety precautions. Uh, we don't want our riders out late at night, um. Um, because our facility is, isn't, we don't have all the fixtures. Because we're, we're on, uh, like I said, it's a warehouse. It's basically like a tent. So we need the daytime facility because we don't have electricity, right? We'll probably be using, you know, generator, a generator, electric generator or something like that. Uh, just for the usage of some of our equipment, um. So when you're, when you're looking at our hours, our hours are, are based upon daylight execution.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions from the commission, the applicants? Okay, hearing none, uh, we can ask for the public's input. Is there anyone in, as a member of the public who would like to comment on application PL dash twenty-one dash four? Shoreline scooter rentals. I'd ask the second time, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak for or against? PL dash twenty-one dash four request of shoreline scooter rentals. And for the third and final time, is there any member of the public who wishes to? Speak for or against PL dash twenty-one dash four request of shoreline scooter rentals. So hearing none, is there any vote to close the public hearing?
I, I moved to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing, Brad, John, any second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe Bunkle. Uh, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
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 Everybody, Karen?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and, uh, that's all five, no opposed. Go to item five, which is the application review. For PL dash twenty-one dash four request of shoreline scooter rentals LLC applicant. Hendel Investors LLC owner for special permit approval for a scooter rental facility. At thirty-five Great Neck Road IG Zone in accordance with sections eleven, point two, point twelve. And twenty-three of the zoning regulations. Any comments by the commission?
Uh, my, my only comment, Greg, is I'm gonna follow up on your comment about hours. I, um, I, I would be in favor of this with the conditions that have been proposed by Mark. But I would add a condition that the hours, that the hours of operation be during daylight hours. I don't think I want to set it at a particular time because sometimes during the summer, you have daylight until eight o'clock at night. Uh, beyond the seven o'clock that they had talked about for operations, so I don't want to hamstring them in that. We want to make it clear that it is a daylight operation only.
Any other comments by the commissioners?
Uh, this is Karen. I have just one more comment. And I'm not sure if this is something that we need to include or if this is just something that the, the business owner could express to any clients that. When they go to the parks and they go to other sites in town, that they have to park their scooters. Where the cars are parking and like Greg was, or, uh, Tim was saying about using the sidewalks, that. They're not parking the scooters in a way that would impede other people using those locations.
Okay, I don't, I don't think, um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure that you can comment during this portion of the application. I think it's more of a comment to you possibly that maybe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, that maybe you would instruct, uh, the renters to abide by all. Rules of the road and, and parking rules, uh, as they're operating basically motor vehicle.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, I think, I think, um, the condition number two that Mark suggested about, um. Coordinating with our, and, uh, traffic officer. You know, a, as they're planning their training session for the renters and that sort of thing that we can, you know. Um, he, he will ensure that it's, it's that sort of thing is included in the training is my understanding.
Yeah, just as long as, um, what may not be included in that, and we should be clear in that item two, is whatever the rules are of the parks. The Waterford traffic officer may not have any control over that. But, you know, the people at Harkness might have certain rules as to, you know, where you can and cannot operate your vehicles. Um, because I know that, I think that they are actually overseen by DEEP and not by Waterford Traffic. So, um, I think maybe we just maybe make it clear that that instruction includes the requirements for, for the parks that they might be going to.
I, I think it's, uh, you know, it's interesting, it's the first rental business around, but I, I bet Harkness is probably fully familiar with. The scooters because they, they seem to be more active every year and so they probably get a fair amount, just not from, from a rental. But, uh, yeah, that's a good, good comment on the, on the, um, contingencies. Um, of the conditions. Any other comments by the commission? Uh, I do have a comment about the, the time limit of daylight. Uh, I really think you did a nice job on exhibit three, meeting the conditions of the plan of conservation and development. I wish, I wish, uh, more of the applications had a detailed, um, you know, exhibit like you did. So, but under the public safety one, I think that that's where we should be concerned about the daylight hours. That's a tough spot right there at night, dark, even, even in a car. Uh, it's not overly well-lit sometimes right there as you're coming up Great Neck from, from, uh, rope ferry. And I, I, I think we should incorporate some sort of, uh, daylight operating hour condition in our, in our motion. If nobody else has any comments, somebody wants to make a motion, maybe add a condition or not?
Sure, um, this is John Bashaw for the record. Um, I, I recommend, um, that the Planning and Zoning Commission find. That the proposed use, that, that the use is in a, is located in the IG Zone District. That the use of a scooter rental facility is one that's allowed through the issuance of a special, special permit. In accordance with section eleven, point two, point twelve of our zoning regulations. That the report provided by the applicant in accordance with section twenty-three point five identifies the findings. And that the proposed use is consistent with sections twenty-three point five point one through twenty-three point five point nine. And that with modifications, um, which, uh, I'll state in a moment. That the site plan conforms to section twenty-two of the Town of Waterford zoning regulations. With those findings, I move that the commission approve the proposal with the following, um, three conditions. Uh, that there be no servicing of any scooters on the premises. That the applicant coordinate, incorporate all safety protocol procedures as full and complete satisfaction of the Waterford. Uh, traffic officer prior to obtaining a certificate of zoning compliance to operate the business. And that such safety protocols incorporate any specific rules and regulations of any of the local parks. Uh, in the area that people may be traveling to. Uh, and that third, that the operations of the, um, of the business be limited to daylight hours only.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe Bunkle. All, uh, any, any discussion on the motion? Okay, then let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
John's aye.
Aye.
Tim is aye, Greg is aye.
Aye.
Joe and Karen are both aye and, so vote is five to nothing approved. Uh, congratulations, gentlemen. Good luck with your new business and welcome to Waterford. Uh, I hope it works out well for you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, is there any correspondence?
We have none.
No correspondence. And item number seven, uh, I don't know if you got my email earlier today. Um, Abby could not be with us this evening to, to present the survey findings, the housing survey findings. So we decided to put the meeting, we'll put this section off so that she can be here with this, Mr., um. Chalder and do it all together, either in the second meeting in May. Uh, depending on what else we have on the agenda or possibly a special meeting as it might deserve its own timeframe. Um, but, so we have no item seven tonight. So all we have is item eight.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Made by John to adjourn. Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Hey, and Joe, it was a pleasure working with you, so good luck.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure working with you folks and I enjoyed this very, very much. It was a, a, a great learning experience for me. And who knows, maybe someday I'll come back. I don't know. We'll see.
Thanks, Joe.
Take care, Joe.
We'll be seeing you around.
Thanks.